Part of a Pelacoma. Ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the 14th Annual American Digital Inclusion Week. We're going to be talking about digital inclusion, technology, and innovation. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact on the digital world, and also about how we can help others in the digital community. We'll talk about how we can contribute to the digital community, create a positive impact
Week, and I want to give you guys a chance to say a few words about why it's important.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Serrato. Thank you, city council. Digital inclusion is a means to digital empowerment. Digital empowerment means that you feel comfortable, confident in moving between not only devices like a smartphone, a tablet, a computer, but also that you have the confidence, skills to navigate programs and apps. And so digital inclusion, it's a five-part method, and it includes people ensuring that people have high-speed, low-cost internet, that they have the appropriate devices, not just smartphones in order to apply for jobs, in order to get telehealth. Three, that people have assistants like digital navigators in order to help them navigate the digital space. Number four, that they have relevant apps and websites to their languages and also to their disabilities. And finally, five, that they have digital literacy skills, that they have the confidence, the digital literacy skills to navigate the digital space in a very meaningful way. Thank you. Oh, before, I want to thank somebody. I want to thank United Way, also our Digital Empowerment Coalition partners. I also want to thank CBOF for their support. We're really, we're really fortunate to have such strong partners who are willing and able to build an ecosystem that helps all Merced City residents. Thank you.
Very much. A big round of applause. All right. Here's our proclamation. Whereas broadband services are essential infrastructure for the 21st century and play an important role in providing access to knowledge and opportunities from communities locally and around the world, and whereas digital empowerment ensures that all individuals have the information technology capacity needed for full participation in our society, democracy, and economy, and is necessary for civic and cultural participation, lifelong learning, access to essential services, and economic development. Whereas neighborhoods across the nation and across the city of Merced are experiencing a digital divide, and whereas South Merced experiences some of the lowest rates of broadband connectivity in the city, with many households lacking access to high-speed internet due to affordability challenges, limited provider options, and gaps in digital literacy, leaving residents at risk of falling further behind in education, employment, and access to essential services, and highlighting the urgent need for infrastructure investment, community outreach, and skills training to close the divide in this historically underserved area. And whereas access to a reliable, affordable internet connection is increasingly recognized as a vital social determinant of health, enabling individuals to obtain essential resources such as healthcare, education, employment, and social services, as well as timely public health information during crises like the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas disparities in access should be treated as a public health issue because they affect the health of people and communities where they live, learn, work, and play. Whereas Digital Inclusion Week 2025 is sponsored by the National Digital Inclusion Alliance and aims to raise awareness of solutions addressing home training and support programs that get household access to the internet. Now therefore, I, Matthew Serrato, Mayor of the city of Merced, on behalf of the Merced City Council, do hereby proclaim October 6th to October 11th as Digital Inclusion Week 2025, and urge all residents to join the council in raising awareness of advancing digital empowerment and being committed to closing the digital divide. Thank you. They give me a long one to read today. They got one for both of yous.
Agenda item G, written petitions and communications. Mayor, the clerk's office received an email from Belinda Burnett regarding public comment. The email was received by the 1:00 PM deadline. It was sent to council and posted on the city's website. Any emails received after the 1:00 PM deadline will be sent to council. Agenda item H, public comments. Members of the public who wish to speak on any matter not listed on the agenda may speak during this portion of the meeting and will be allotted three minutes. The mayor may propose a further limit to the time available for all speakers at the discretion of the city council in order to accommodate as many speakers as possible. State law prohibits the city council from acting at this meeting on any matter raised during the public comment period. Members of the public who wish to speak on a matter that is listed on the agenda will be called upon to speak during the discussion of that item. And Mayor, I currently have seven request to speak forms.
Thank you, Jennifer. Three minutes each.
Okay, if I can get the first speakers to the podium, first four speakers to the podium to my left. Sierra Kelly, Cindy Kelly, Johnny Lan, and Fortunato Acosta.
All right. Good evening and welcome.
Hi. Hello, Mayor, council, and my fellow community. My name is Sierra Kelly, and I am here to propose an idea in which I hope you will take into serious consideration. Imagine driving down West Main Street, and instead of finding a frequently changing one-way road, you instead see a four-block stretch of the local community sitting under shade trees, playing with their kids, and spending money at our local businesses. This stretch of Main Street is the perfect spot, as there is close parking lots and bus stops that can bring people right to the heart of our city. Imagine having somewhere to do a little shopping, grab a bite to eat, and then maybe catch a movie. Um, sorry. Two weeks ago, during the last meeting, I listened to the community express concern over public seating, safe places to go, and keeping their businesses above the red. Well, with a pedestrian-only street, we can offer that solution for each of those issues in one spot. Now, what is a pedestrian-only street? It is a section of town or city that is blocked off from cars that will create a space that any and everyone can utilize. This will allow a safe space for anyone to enjoy without worrying about cars or toxic fumes while they're sitting outside. The city of Merced can host events which will bring in tourism, resulting in significant economic growth for our local businesses. And finally, it would be visually pleasing, as this would allow for more vegetative growth, providing shade and naturally cooler summers. Restaurants and storefronts can expand their outdoor seating, and we could commission our local artists to bring beautiful murals about our beautiful city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager McBride, and city attorney Cornwell. Cindy Kelly here for the Merced SPCA. Want to talk to you about our event this weekend. It is the Community Cat Walk. This is our second Halloween cat walk. Last year was really kind of interesting. This year is going to be an extra special. We have Girl Scout Troop 3019 who used their profits from their annual cookie sale to build community cat shelters for the winter for our homeless pets, our homeless cats. They've also built 11 cat signs, community colony cat signs, so people are aware that there is a community colony in those areas. So we're really excited that these young ladies took this initiative, contacted us, and decided that this year they wanted to be involved with the Merced SPCA, provide this for our homeless animals in the city. And so we hope to see all of you out there. It's going to be Saturday from 10:00 to 10:30. There will be a recognition and dedication ceremony. And then from 10:30 to 11:30 is our annual Halloween Community Cat Walk. We encourage you to wear costumes. Costumes are always encouraged. Our cats along the Bear Creek from R Street to M Street are used to seeing really strange things, so they don't get really scared by strange things coming along the creek. So the better, the bigger the costume, the better. And we will have light refreshments. There'll be coffee, juice, and of course, some donuts first thing in the morning. So we hope to see you there for that. We, I also wanted to talk to you about our spay and neuter program for dogs and puppies. Give you an update. As of 8:00 AM this morning, we've had 143 applications, of which 74 were considered eligible. They must be a city resident in Merced to be eligible for that program. And we started spaying and neutering last week. So we have appointments starting last week on the 13th, all the way through mid-January books so far. So it has been a huge success in just the past 20 days since we opened it. We have very limited spots left, so we are encouraging people to go to mercedspca.org, sign up, pay the $75, and let us spay or neuter your dog or puppy. And thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Johnny Lan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the community. My name is Johnny Lan. I'm acting planning manager in Development Services. We have begun our Merced general plan update and in the middle of our downtown station area plan. I wanted to remind you all about our first public workshop and open house, which will be taking place on Thursday, October 23rd, so this week, from 6:00 to 8:00, right here in City Hall, downstairs in the atrium in Sam Pipes Room. Please join us. Give us your input, your concerns, how you imagine Merced, just as mentioned earlier by a previous, a previous speaker. If you can't make it, you can go on to our website, which is imaginemerced.com, and post your comments there. We do look at it, and we are trying to bring them together so that we can make sure that this vision is the community's vision. It's not just the city of Merced's vision. So, hope to see you there.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Joe. Speak.
Hi there. My name is Fortunato Acosta. I am a excited member of the community for the upcoming High-Speed Rail, and I just wanted to ask if it was possible for a more transparent process in how you guys are making sure that the High-Speed Rail does go through the city of Merced. Again, someone I'm super excited for and would love to come to our city. I think that'd be beneficial to see what you guys are doing to do that. I know it's a very laborious process on your, on your hand to talk back and forth with the people that are in charge of that, but it'd be nice to hear. And that's about it, really. Thank you.
No, we're happy to reach out to you, too. Obviously, a lot of work, lot of work going on, and we are happy to, to leave your contact information. We're happy to reach out, share some information.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, can I get the next three speakers? Christina Valente Felix, Jerry Bonilla, and Josh Pedroso.
Good afternoon, I mean, good evening, city council, mayor, everybody else that's here. My name is Christina Valenti Felix, and I'm here with the Robert Rojas Foundation Worldwide. And recently, about two weeks ago, a little over two weeks ago, there were two overdoses in the downtown jail. Had the inmate not been aware of what it looks like to have an overdose occur, both inmates would have died. There's no Narcan available in the dorms or the cells, so I'm requesting that each cell be provided with Narcan, and the dorms be provided with at least one Narcan, because the inmates will get to the other inmate faster than the staff can. They have to hit the button, and they have to wait for the correction officers to respond. Once they respond, then they have to go out and, you know, hit the, I mean, they have to call for the nurse to respond. So that time is of the essence when it comes to an overdose. Both of them were fentanyl overdoses, and they happened back to back. One happened in the dorm, the other one happened on the yard when they were, you know, told to go out in the yard where they handled the first overdose. So they were simultaneous, you know, right after, one after another. And the first inmate was not breathing, and so CPR had to be performed. That inmate would have died if the other inmate that was present did not know what to do when it came to an overdose. So I'm encouraging, you know, somebody here to get ahold of the jail staff so that Narcan can be provided. I probably have enough Narcan to supply both jails if somebody wants to reach out to me regarding that. And also, there's black mold in the downtown jail. It is posing threats to people who have health issues. So, you know, just by spraying it with bleach is not going to take it away, you know, and these people are, you know, being housed in this environment. And just because they are incarcerated doesn't mean that, you know, they have to deal with situations like that. So that is what I proposed to tell the staff and everybody else about what's going on here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Christina. The, um, the jail is overseen by the sheriff in the county, so fortunately, one of your county supervisors is right there. I'd follow up with Josh and then follow up with the sheriff's department. Because sheriff's the one who oversees it. So sheriff's separately elected, so he oversees it. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Bonilla, and I'm just coming on behalf of the homelessness people out there, and I wanted to propose something. I've been recently going to Las Banas a lot to visit my niece, and I see you got, there's a tent community over there. So I was going to bring it upon the community to see if we could get a tent community here in Merced to help with the homelessness. If we could get him and move him out to a section, you know, and provide him housing or somewhere to stay safe, I think it would be more positive for all of us not to wake up and see him in, on the side of the house, on the side of the building, or down Main Street, or, you know, in front of a church, or wherever they are, you know? And it would take some of the crime down also, because winter's coming. They're going to start breaking in all these, you know, these empty apartments, all these empty houses. And putting a board up a window is not going to help anything, because most of them got electronic tools with them, in their baskets, in their bags, in their purses, you know? Takes three minutes to take it off, juh, 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 and it's gone. They're inside. Free water, free predigene. When we could just give them a tent, put them out, they'll be safe, we know where they are. There's no nuisance, you know? I've been going over there, and I've been talking to Merced, I mean, to Las Banas PD, and they got it well managed. I'm sure we can, we could do the same here if we put a little effort into it. I know a lot of these officers, they're out there. I know a couple people, you know, and all they say is we need management and people that are willing to help. And you do got that, you know? So I'm just bringing it to their attention that maybe if you guys would consider bringing Tent City this way and giving the people here an opportunity to get safe and warm for this winter. That's what I'm bringing up to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. If you leave your contact information, we can, yeah, we can definitely, we can follow up. Mr. Pedroso.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager McBride, city attorney Cornwell, Josh Pedroso, supervisor District 2. Before I start my quick update, I wanted to thank our city police department, and especially Chief Stanfield and Captain Perez for attending the Our Lady Mercy School. First responders masked. The only city department we were missing was the fire department, so next year, I hope that you guys are going to be there. So I was told that I had to do that, so I'm sorry. Okay, I wanted to get, I just wanted to give you a quick update ahead, ahead of tomorrow's Board of Supervisors meeting. We will be discussing two big issues that affect all of us, illegal food vendors and illegal dumping. Illegal food vending has become a growing concern countywide. These pop-ups aren't just unpermitted, they're unsafe. We've seen stored, food stored in food buckets, or open buckets handled without gloves or hand washing stations, and meat left out without refrigeration. That puts people at real risk of getting sick, and the public deserves better. There's also a safety issue. Many of these pop-ups set up right along Public Rights Way, like at Highway 59 and 16th Street, where drivers and pedestrians have to go around them. It's a problem for everyone. It's a big safety issue. Tomorrow's presentation will cover what the county's doing to address this. We're stepping up coordinated sweeps with our city partners, adding staff focused on enforcement and doing more outreach to help vendors operate legally and safely. We're also working closely with local law enforcement and public works to make sure everyone's on the same page. I also want to take a moment to thank the city, really all of the cities, for being such a great, great partners. City manager McBride and his team have been excellent to work with, and that cooperation and collaborative approach to tackling this effort is really beneficial to, to the county and to the city of Merced. At the end of the day, ultimately, this isn't about cracking down on small business. It's about fairness and public safety. Every permitted vendor and restaurant in Merced County invests the time and money to meet health standards. We owe it to them and to our residents to make sure everyone plays by the same rules. And again, I want to thank you. I can't say enough how much I want to thank you for your collaborative approach and, and working together on this, really all of the cities. Our meeting is tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM at 2222 M Street, and I just want to say thank you. And if anybody has any questions, you can email me at josh.pedroso@countyofmerced.com, or you can call me at 209-385-7663. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Pedroso. Jennifer, anyone else?
I have two more, from Rhonda Batson and Karthik Prasad.
Good evening, Ms. Rhonda.
Good evening, everyone. So if you haven't had an opportunity to see the video that went around Merced, that was recorded by the local NAACP president, Alan Brooks, at the Board Playhouse Merced Board Meeting. If you hadn't had an opportunity to check that out, I would highly suggest that you do. And it's only, the only reason why I'm bringing this to your attention and bringing this up is that I know that you guys honor and give certificates and present proclamations and things like that to different organizations, but someone who reacted and acted that way in public, in a public setting, should not be honored, should not be recognized, and should not be given any attention here in Merced. So if the public, I would encourage you as well to look into Merced. So if the public, I would encourage you as well to look into it and also to speak up on this situation that happened. And again, it's too long to go into. It would take more than three minutes. So I highly suggest that you look at the video. I will post it on your page, on your, on the city's page, once I get it. And make sure that everyone looks at everything, both sides of the situation that has happened. And for those of you that know what's going on, you know, this is absurd, recalling this situation a racism situation. And for those of you who have been involved with Playhouse, please come out, support Playhouse during their time in need at this time. I've been a longstanding volunteer. Well, longstanding, it's been at least 10 years that I've been volunteering there, and I've seen everything. I've been through different presidents, different people in the organization for a long time, and I've never experienced seeing anything like this before. So again, the community, if you're involved in Playhouse, or you've come to shows, if you know people who are part of the show and know what's going on, please get involved, please speak up and help out. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Karthik.
The one and only. Well, actually, I think there's a couple others. But good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city of Merced. My name is Karthik Prasad, here on behalf of Congressman Adam Gray. And through all the chaos and everything going on in DC, we're still pretty hard at work trying to get things done. And it's actually for that reason I am here, is to ask for your support. This summer, Congressman Adam Gray introduced the Protecting Healthcare and Lowering Costs Act to protect access to healthcare for Valley families. The bill was a response to H.R. 1 and would have reversed all of the healthcare cuts that were passed in the budget bill and extend the Affordable Care Act's enhanced premium tax credit. With 4 million Californians set to lose their healthcare coverage and another 1.7 million set to see premium increases of 66%, it's a critical piece of legislature that will help keep care within reach for families in our community. We hope that you'll consider endorsing the bill. We actually sent an email to city staff and members of the council, I believe, a week or two ago, and attached in there was a one-pager, a draft letter of support, and editorial that was published in the Fresno Bee on the legislature and the looming healthcare crisis. We want to thank you for your consideration, and don't hesitate to reach out to us. Our office is right around the corner, 602 West 20th Street, and want to thank you for your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
That's all we have, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay, agenda item I, consent calendar.
Onto our consent agenda. Any members of the council wish to have any items on the consent agenda pulled for separate consideration? Jennifer, anybody from the public seeking any items pulled for separate consideration?
We don't have anything, Mayor.
All right. With that, I'll take it back to council for discussion on the consent agenda or a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Boyle, and a second by Councilmember Dupont. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Okay, and the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Jennifer. Under reports, agenda item J.
Okay, agenda item J, reports, J1, update regarding Merced Fire Department First Responder Advanced Life Support Program.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Chief Wilson, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council, City Manager, City Attorney. Thank you for the opportunity to present, Casey Wilson, Fire Chief. So this evening, we're going to bring you a short update on our advanced life support program. Just a little bit of a refresher, what is First Responder Advanced Life Support? So often referred to as FRALES is paramedics on fire engines, squads, and ladder trucks. So generally, we do not transport patients in those apparatus. Historically, MFD was trained to the BLS level. So just a reminder, I know the council's probably well aware of this, but more for the community, EMT versus paramedic, what is the difference? EMTs are basic life support training, 170 hours of training, minimally, that's the minimum level of training that all of our firefighters are trained to. We have the skills of basic airway management and basic patient stabilization. So when we get over into the paramedic level of training, or often referred to as advanced life support, there's about 1,200 to 1,800 hours of training. It's approximately a two-year process. Our skills increase to advanced airway management, cardiac monitoring, medication administration, and some pain management for our patients. Just a review of our previous council action, and back in November of 2024, we executed a First Responder Advanced Life Support Agreement with Merced County EMS that was approved by council. And then council also supported us with some additional equipment to support the ALS program, and Engine 51 became ALS effective January 2025. And then the squad was implemented in March of 2025 and is ALS one available. And you also approved the battalion chief position, which provides the oversight for the ALS program. Chief Brunelli was moved from a shift battalion chief position into the EMS chief position. So I'm actually going to invite Chief Brunelli up to go through the, the rest of the slides. That's a little more technical information is what falls directly under his purview as our EMS chief. Chief Brunelli?
Thank you, Chief Wilson. Chief Brunelli?
Thank you, Chief. A little shorter. Good evening. So as Chief said, we've been moving forward, trying to progress the program. I'm actually happy to share with you all that we've made great progress doing that. Currently, where we stand, we have 11 licensed, state licensed and accredited, locally accredited paramedics that are out on the streets providing care. We have an additional seven personnel that are in various stages of training right now. And then we have five personnel that have taken the entrance exam to get into the Merced College Paramedic Program in the next cohort, which starts in January of this year. So we're making great progress, and we're in a great position to expand our, our service to the community. So just a quick review, January 1st of this year, Engine 53 stood up in ALS capacity. From January 1st to August 31st, they provided 992 medical responses within their response area. And of those responses, 261 of those were actually advanced life support level of service. So they are making a difference out there in the community. March 3rd, we stood up the squad, and they also were operating at ALS capacity. But as a special note here, you'll notice there in red that they were ALS one available, meaning that not quite every single day they had a paramedic on it. But we'll say about 98% of the time, there was a paramedic on that piece of equipment when it was responding to calls. But during, during that time, from March 3rd through the end of August, they were made 735 medical-related responses. And of those 735 responses, they provided advanced life support at 205 of those responses. So again, they are making a pretty significant difference out there in the community. This is just a quick synopsis of some of the advanced life support care that's been provided to the community. What we did is we just extracted the, the level of care that can only be provided by a paramedic, and you'll see there, there were a lot of ALS interventions, mostly cardiac-related, but you do see several, you know, IV administrations, some, some medication administrations in there. And then a little note down there on Narcan, because that is a hot topic in the community, that number says eight, but that is because I extracted just the advanced level of care, meaning those were IV or IO administrations on Narcan, not an intranasal administration that our BLS providers could do. So I did that so that we could actually see what level of care did we get above the basic life support level out of our paramedics. As we continue to progress the ALS program, we're, we're moving full steam ahead. So September 17th of this year, we stood up Engine 51 to an ALS one available capacity, which means that we, it was, any day that there was a paramedic staffed on Engine 51, it was upgraded to an ALS level of service. As we move forward, I'm happy to say that with the, the graduation of our four new recruits that are in the academy right now, we are in position that effective November 1st, Engine 51 will become full-time ALS, meaning 24/7 ALS capacity. So another, another significant advancement in the level of care we're able to provide to the community. With our current trajectory and, and the, the training of our personnel, when we expect them to finish that training, we have the capacity to add a fourth advanced life support unit in the, in the first quarter of 2026. All of our data that we're looking at right now is suggesting that Engine 55 is the next natural progression and expanding that level of service based off of response volume overall within the community. Once we reach that point, we will be providing advanced level service to about 73% of all EMS-related responses within the city. So we are making significant progress. Again, that, we will be just over a 12-month timeframe there. We went from no ALS to covering the majority of our ALS responses. So I think that's a huge, a huge win from a, a response standpoint. As we move forward, we are looking at different ways of deploying these resources in the community. So we're always looking at efficiency and, and what can be the best, the best use of these resources within the community. One of the things that we have had our eye on is, is the use of a squad, the squad concept. And so as we put Squad 53 in service earlier this year, we were able to start collecting data. And our current analysis indicates that if we were able to put a squad in service at Station 51 and Station 53 and run those out to those EMS responses, those two units could provide coverage to about 59% of all medical-related responses within the city. So that would be a, a pretty significant improvement in, in our efficiency from an ALS response perspective. We're also having various discussions with the new contracted exclusive ambulance provider that's coming into the community, and talking about different ways that we can integrate the use of our paramedics into the EMS system. Again, one of our goals was to improve the system and help, help bolster a system that was really under strain as the, the use of the system increased. So we continue to have those talks, those talks with them. There's a lot of, a lot of promising discussions that are happening right now. And as we, as we, you know, figure out what's going to be best fit for our organization and for our community, we'll be able to come back and share those with you. One of the promising things out of that is as we enhance those levels of service, there's increased opportunities to start recovering costs for the services we're providing, which is part of that efficiency model. With that, I will open that up to any questions related to ALS that the, the chief can answer.
All right. Any questions for Chief Brunelli? If so, he's going to direct them to Chief Wilson. Councilor Smith?
Thank you, Chief Brunelli. Thank you, Chief Wilson. Couple of questions. You started to talk about it, Chief, when you're referencing efficiency. Can you maybe describe a little more detail the process of deciding how you dispatch for a basic life support call versus an acute?
Yeah. So, so the way that the call is actually determined, which is going to be the best resource for that response, is used through the emergency medical dispatching process. And so we, we have kind of a hybrid component here within the city of Merced and through our dispatch at the police department, where we use what's called a true time emergency matrix. We take a set, specific emergency response determinants that we get. We determine that those fall within this 33-card matrix that has literally thousands of different determinant codes in it, and we cross-reference those and say, hey, these 10 to 15 specific determinants require a paramedic response. And those, those are cross-referenced at the county level and signed off by the county medical director. So it's kind of complex because it changes quite frequently as we get data back. But really, it's, it's a data-driven analysis that we say, hey, how many of those responses needed a paramedic? And then we go back in through the QI process, say, how many of those paramedic-related responses actually needed ALS care on the backside?
So this is, this is the analysis that a dispatcher does in real time? Or this kind of like, you go back and you do a postmortem on the data?
This is a retrospective view that we do after and look at the data, and then, and then basically give those, the play cards, we'll call them, to the dispatchers to make those decisions.
Got it. Okay. So in your view, to get to a point where we've got a sufficient amount of acute life support service for 100% of our community, how many more squads or stations need to be enabled in this regard?
With the data that we currently have, and the, the traditional growth patterns that we see a 3% to 5% increase in call volume, I'm going to say we need probably five ALS resources to provide adequate coverage to the city to make sure that every EMS response is going to get a paramedic.
So right now, we have one, almost two. Is that right?
Yes, two, almost three.
Sorry. Thank you. Two, almost three. And 55 is potentially going to be next, so that would be four.
Yes.
Okay. How does the, how do the annexations in the southeast of Merced and around UC Merced impact our ability to hit that target?
Great question. So that, that's, that does affect that model. That is why Engine 55, we're starting to see the data suggest that Engine 55 is that next resource, because we are picking up that increased call volume as, as the city starts to grow to the north, and then grabbing that piece of the UC that does bring some call volume. Likewise, as the city spreads to the south, we're going to start to see some increased call volume out there, and that will likely, as the community grows and the population increases, we are going to see an increased need for probably an additional resource out there as well.
So what do you think is the gating item? Is it, is it apparatus, or is it train, cross-trained firefighters or paramedics?
Who?
Not going to hold you to it.
That's a great question, because they kind of go hand in hand. You know, I think, I think right now, under the, the current climate with it, when it comes to being able to acquire apparatus, I think we can probably train folks a little bit faster than we can acquire those apparatus. But there's kind of a limiting factor there, too, right? Based off of staffing. At some point, at a certain point, we've reached a tipping, you know, scale where we've trained all of our personnel, and we have to start reaching to the outside to bring in personnel that are already trained. So I'm not sure that those can be separated, if that, to be very vague in the way I answer.
That's fair. Those are my questions. Thank you, Chief.
Additional questions from the council? Jennifer, anything for the public on this item?
We don't have anything, Mayor.
Just on for information only, last chance for questions, or else we can move on. Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation. Chief, anything to add?
I was just going to say thank you again for the opportunity to present. And Councilmember Smith, just to expand a little bit on the efficiency piece. One of the models we're looking at with the squad concept, a lot of the efficiency comes within the apparatus itself and then the personnel on it. So being a squad has two personnel on it, a little more efficient than a, in an engine that has three to four personnel on it. Same thing with our ladder truck. And then the wear and tear on our apparatus is, is a big factor, knowing that fire engines are four years out. A fire engine's about $1.2 million. Squad's about $300,000 to $350,000. That's where we see a lot of efficiency in getting that life out of our engines and our trucks. It kind of helps, helps support that and bolster our apparatus perspective.
Yeah. No, it's helpful for me to understand, I'm sure, the, the council to know sort of what you and your team need to be able to bring this resource to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item J2, presentation of the annual AB 481 report detailing military equipment currently used by the Merced Police Department.
Chief Stanfield?
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is our annual AB 481 report. This is a verbal report that we give the second council meeting in October. We want to give it this time because we want to invite you to our open house, which is this Saturday, October 25th, our annual Cops and Critters Trunk or Treat event, which we also wrap into our annual open house to observe all this military equipment. It's a perfect opportunity to invite our community out to see the equipment that we have and see what the police department has under its military equipment policy, but also invite your children out for the trunk or treat and the car show. So that's my shameless plug. They get everybody out there between 10 and 1 o'clock on West 22nd Street, entrance on M. Come over and get some free candy. The event is free, and this event raises money for our zoo. So we encourage everybody to come. But it also meets the requirements of AB 481. California Assembly Bill 481 requires that yearly, annually, the police department discloses all military use equipment. You might ask, what is that? Military use equipment is any item primarily used by the Merced Police Department personnel during critical incidents or tactical operations. These incidents are missions-based and may only call for some of the items to be used, but our goal is to resolve these incidents in a manner that will best safeguard the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, and civil liberties. The attempt to resolve each incident without using force or as minimal force as possible is our primary goal. This document that we created is updated. We updated it in September. I'm going to hit the highlights here. It's a 40-page document, but it will be available on our website. Anybody can look at it anytime you like, and it's readily available. We made special care to produce this report to not only give you what items we have, how many of them we have, the average lifespan, how much we paid for it. And then we give a short narrative as to why we have it, what it's used for, so that we try to eliminate all questions that our community may have as to why we have it, what we paid for it, how long does it last, et cetera, et cetera. There are several things that you'll see on, on our report. To hit the highlights, drones are on there, unmanned aerial systems, UAS. You could hear them called drones or robots. Our armored personnel carriers are multi-purpose wheeled vehicles. We have a command post that we fit into that category. Any kind of specialized firearms or ammunition, chemical agents, what we would call OC-filled projectiles, that's oleoresin capsicum, which is pepper spray, and flash grenades, as well as any types of ammunition we have, and less lethal rounds. There will be a couple highlights that I'll hit here. I'll give most of the highlights in this verbal report, but I encourage you all, if anybody wants to see in detail how much ammunition we have and everything like that, you can pull the 40-page document yourself, and it's completely available to anybody. And again, if you'd like to see any of these items, we will have them available to you at our open house. at our open house this Saturday between 20 and 1 at the Cops and Critters Car Show. So first of all, we have nine, 12 drones in four different models of drone. We use DJI drones at this time. Those are still authorized to be flown. There could be some changes in those. This document gets updated once a year, so I just want to remind you that there is some legislation that would change the kind of drones or UAVs that we can use to be US-made only. And if that legislation changes, all of these will be taken out of service because they do have parts that are from another country that would be banned. But at this point, we can still use them, but we're monitoring that closely. We also have two tactical robots that our SWAT team uses for tactical entries to open doors and to clear buildings. And we have two bomb robots. I just want to remind everybody that we are the official bomb squad for two and a half counties for Mariposa, Merced, and parts of Fresno County. So we cover a very large area for bomb response. And I think our council is intimately aware that we spend a lot of time traveling outside of our jurisdictional area to assist especially Mariposa up in the Yosemite area with our bomb. These robots are invaluable. Captain Perez has been a longstanding member of our bomb team. These, these robots are very expensive, but, but they are invaluable to being able to x-ray and search possible destructive devices. We have two of them. We also have one Avenger SWAT truck built in 2006. I'm going to pause here briefly, just as a reminder. Two years ago in the budget, this council approved the purchase of a new replacement for this SWAT truck. It's an Avenger model SWAT truck. It's out of service. The company no longer exists. We can no longer get parts for it. We have ordered the replacement. That's why you still see this on here. And the new purchase is not listed in this report because we have not taken possession of, of that equipment yet. There was at least a 12 to 14-month build time on that. And we were notified maybe two months ago or so that there was some delays and we probably will not receive it until quarter one of next year is our, our, our most recent update. So in next year's report, this will change and it will be the new Linco SWAT truck, which will be the new version on a Ford chassis that we purchased last year or two years ago now on our budget. We have one mobile command post that was purchased in 2021 with the, the assistance of some DUI and Office of Traffic Safety funds. You probably see it travel around a lot. Most recently, it was used at the major fires for the fire department. And we have several rifles. We use a variance of Colt AR-15-style rifles. We have 49 of those. We have four 308 rifles. We have four six-to-eight-millimeter precision shot rifles or sniper rifles, one Ruger Mini-14 sniper rifle, and 21 Bushmaster Tile AR-15s. What we have tried to do is take our shotguns out of service and we are converting the entire shotgun fleet, the 870 shotgun fleet, to beanbag shotguns to give less lethal options for officers to try to resolve conflict with non-lethal force. So we're converting our entire 870 arsenal to beanbag shotguns for a less lethal and so that every officer has an opportunity to have more less lethal opportunities in each vehicle so we can try to resolve conflict without using lethal force. So we, at this point, we've converted 12 of those 870s. You should, I would expect that number to go up as we continue through the conversion. It's not as simple as just putting a beanbag round in a shotgun. We have to completely redo the shotgun and, and change the way it looks and change the color of it. So there's no question it's a less lethal shotgun. We have, and I'm not going to bore you with the various amounts of ammunition we have, but obviously we have ammunition that we would use to put into these weapons, 308, 223, 9mm, et cetera. And we have various gas canisters, pepper balls, smoke grenades, flashbangs, as well as a 40-millimeter gas launcher. I know that sounds like a big deal, but if you come out and see it, it's just a launcher that would launch a gas grenade farther than you could throw it is really all that is. And then 12 870, Remington 870. Remington 870 has been the standard shotgun since before I was an officer. It's been a shotgun in police service for as long as I can remember. It's probably the most common shotgun used for police agencies and we're converting them all over right now into less lethal beanbag shotguns. The last thing in this report that we have to acknowledge is that we have a complaint process. The complaint process that we have, we utilize Mark 43. Mark 43 is a computer-based software program that feeds directly to the police officer standards and training website to be SB2 compliant. It is the platform that POST requires us and would like us to use to upload all of our complaint process. So we utilize Mark 43 through the complaint process. And our complaint process is also outlined in this document on the last page and it outlines how complaints, complaints, excuse me, can be made, whether in person, by phone, or by mailing in letters to the police department. So we have a very detailed complaint process through the complaint forms and we are in compliance with AB 481 through our complaint process as well. This report is required by law to be done once a year, both verbally, but I will keep this document up on our website the entire year. And once I'm done with tonight's presentation, we'll post the new updated one on our website, hopefully by tomorrow. And then you'll have that through the entire year. And if we need to make any changes, especially if we take ownership of a new armored vehicle, we'll add that to the document and then re-upload the new document on our website. And I again encourage everybody as part of this process, the last part is the open house that is also required. The open house will be again this Saturday between 10 and 1 at the police department. If you want to come view any of this equipment that we listed here today, it'll all be available to you to look at and you can see it for yourselves and see what it is this Saturday. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, chief. Questions for Chief Stanfield? Jennifer, any questions from the public?
We don't have anything, mayor.
Okay. Bring it back to council. Again, ladies and gentlemen, this is our annual AB 481 report detailing any military equipment currently in the possession of the police department. And as Chief Stanfield mentioned as well, there'll be an open house where all this will be on display as well. All right. Anybody else? Again, information only, so no action required. Okay. So no further questions. We will move on to our action item.
Okay. Item K, action items. K1, adopting a resolution of the City of Merced, City Council authorizing an application to the Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, Measure V Regional 2025 Implementation Plan Call for Projects.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mr. Jordan?
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we are here to consider approving a resolution to authorize the application to the MCAG Measure V Regional 2025 Implementation Plan Call for Projects. On November 8th of 2016, the voters of Merced County approved Measure V, a one-half-cent sales transaction and use tax to supplement transportation roads and alternative transportation project funding. The Measure V transportation sales tax will be in place for 30 years, expiring on March 31st, 2047. Currently, the city has three active projects under the Measure V Regional Allocation Program. They include the Highway 59 Widening Project, Black Rascal Creek Bridge Expansion, which are programmed as two separate projects, and Mission Avenue Widening. Staff met with the Transportation Subcommittee on September 30th, 2025, to discuss funding options for the three regional projects. It was advised to focus funding on the Highway 59 Black Rascal Bridge Project due to the current unsafe conditions of the bridge for the travelers. These three projects are, that we're considering tonight is Highway 59 Widening, Phase 1. We are requesting to reprogram $4 million from the Highway 59 Widening Project to the Black Rascal Bridge Project. Secondly, the Highway 59 Black Rascal Bridge Project, we're requesting the $4 million in reprogram funds from the Highway 59 Widening Project and requesting an additional $4 million funds for the project construction. And then the third project, Mission Avenue Widening, the project scope and funding updates to phase, the widening into two phases. Phase 1 will consist of widening Mission Avenue from Henry Street to Mayfair Road. And Phase 2 will consist of widening from just west of Mayfair Road to approximately quarter mile west of State Highway 59. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have on this this evening.
Right. Thank you, our city engineer, Mr. McBride.
Thank you, mayor. Excuse me. Thank you, mayor. Obviously, just to recap a little bit here, for Measure V, you have a regional allocation, which we're talking about tonight, and you have a local component that we receive every year. Local component, as you know, goes to a lot of projects that we do locally that are for both pedestrian improvements and for street improvements. So the regional component, it can only go so far. And so we've been working with MCAG on trying to leverage the funds. And this was a creative solution that came forward and suggested that we look into. You just basically have a lot of need and not a lot of funding to fit the need. And so we have, we have a gap and we don't have an easy way to fill that gap. And so this was their suggestion to try to get some portion of this bigger project complete. And they want to work to try to backfill the remainder. You know, I'm going to kind of speak off the cuff a little bit here. It's unfortunate we're trying to fix a state highway system. It's unfortunate we're trying to fix a safety issue on the state highway system. I think the state needs to step up and help us fix their issue. We all want to try to take that approach in the future. I think there's, there's a good reason why they should be contributing funds and hopefully we can try to get them to, to do that. But I think there's, there's good clarity in taking this approach for the time being. We wanted to put this here on action items because we felt, given the dollar amounts and the policy changes, it wasn't a consent item. We thought it warranted more conversation and that's why we put it here tonight for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Just for clarity, two changes. Currently, we have the Measure V regional projects that's divided into both east side of the county and west side of the county regional projects. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, 27% of the total dollar amount taken in by Measure C goes to east side regional projects, so east of the San Joaquin River. And then on the west side, 17% goes to that. So this, we're concerned with our east side regional projects. There's a number of projects that are proposed by varying, by different jurisdictions. Each project has to be classified as a regional project, meaning it impacts multiple jurisdictions. The city of Merced has proposed the Highway 59 Widening Project and the Black Rascal Creek Bridge Project. And originally is one, but just given the, the size and the complexity of both, the decision was made to split them. And also too, our other project, which the Highway 59 projects are well along and I think, believe fully, they're pretty much shovel-ready. Am I not wrong?
They're, they're close to being.
Pretty close. So they're pretty far along in design.
Yep.
Mission also very, very important, but Mission is probably only, what, 10% designed roughly?
That's, that's accurate. Yes.
So these are close to being ready to go. I think Scott makes a really good point how this is a state highway. We need to, but we, at the same time, can use our money to, you know, hopefully secure some grant funding or some contribution from the state. But the two decision, or the main decision here is to focus on the, on the bridge project to expedite that and get that ready to go. One, not just being shovel-ready, but two, have the money ready. And then also two, to split Mission when the time comes into two phases. Questions from the council? Councilor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Engineer. So piggybacking on what city manager and mayor just said, so we're, we've got three projects before us. We're being, the council is being asked to approve putting all of our eggs into two of those projects instead of three. The project that we're being asked to, to move away from, at least in the short term, is widening Highway 59, right? And so I just want to make sure I understand, that's a project that would widen Highway 59 from West Childs to 16th Street, more or less, or to, to State Route 99?
Like all, all.
And then also from 16th Street to Olive?
16th Street to Olive, yes.
Okay. Is it, is it true that the, the project would widen 59 West Childs until 99?
I'll defer to the city manager on that portion, but there is some issues with the intersection with the railroads and how they're going to interact with the 59.
Okay.
This is all of the 16th?
I will represent everybody within the sound of my voice that the Caltrans website has that project showing widening 59 from Childs to 99 and then from 16th Street to Olive.
That's another.
Yeah. Yeah. They, they have their own separate project, which they're taking on for South Highway 59, which is not part of this project.
Okay.
So the project that was being considered was, did not include the intersection at 16th Street and 59, just so I clearly get that on the record too.
Yeah.
It's basically south, I'm going to take that back, north of that to Olive Avenue.
Okay. Yeah. So despite, despite what Shane found on the internet, we're, that Childs to 99 is not in front of us. Okay. That's, that's why I asked the question.
I think that's a separate Caltrans project and I believe they're going to work on South 59. So MLK Fairgrounds and that area of the south in '27, if I'm not mistaken? So they have a, they're, they're an improvement project coming, I believe, in '27.
Okay. All right. Just want to make sure I understand what we're, what we're looking at here. Nonetheless, the widening project had some Caltrans shop grants attached to it, correct?
$2 million, yes.
Okay. State Highway Operation and Protection Program. As far as we know now, or maybe you've got updated information, that $2 million grant is not transferable from the widening project to the bridge project, right?
That is correct. We can't move that there, so we're trying to coordinate with Caltrans now to see what we can use that for.
Is the idea to try to put it into a, a different project or start to keep it in the widening?
Maybe keep it in the widening and focus more on the, the right-of-way that we need for the project. Maybe spend it there.
Is it, what's the timeline in terms of having to expend those shop funds?
Like we said earlier, Caltrans has projects coming up here within the next two years, so they wanted us to spend those monies before they come through with any of their corridor work. So we're looking at about a two-year window.
So the money would have to be spent hypothetically before the end of 2026?
That's correct.
Okay. And the Mission Avenue Widening Project is not impacted one way or the other by deciding not to fund the widening project at this time?
That is correct.
Okay. I think those are my questions for you, for Mr. Jordan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Jennifer, anything from the public?
We don't have anything there.
Okay. Bring it back to council for discussion and/or action. Councilor Smith?
So I'll pick up. I'll pick up in the part where I talk to my colleagues. So we had a Transportation Subcommittee meeting that was discussed. The Transportation Subcommittee is composed of Mayor Protem, Boyle, Mayor Serrato, and We were asked for our thoughts and input on this question we're posed with as a full council today. And this wasn't brought up in the presentation, but the, the vote, if you can call it that, was not unanimous. Mayor Protem, Boyle, and Mayor Serrato support taking the money that would spend Measure V money, program for the widening project and putting it into the bridge project. I did not, I don't agree with that policy decision. I think there are very good reasons to emphasize trying to widen the bridge that we can, we can all discuss, but I've got, well, I have, I have concerns about the, the governance process we followed, but I have concerns about walking away from $2 million in state money that doesn't exist and it can't be moved to the bridge project. We had a long and robust discussion in our last meeting about how we need to accelerate our grant writing capabilities to further fund what we want to do. And so I just don't think it's wise to walk away from $2 million that we have programmed, that we've put staff time into and accepted for a project. Because we've got a recent request from MCAG to start packaging our money behind projects, start getting projects through. And so, you know, I might think that we were drawing on a cleaner slate if it wasn't that, but I can't support foregoing $2 million in road funding that our team acquired for us because I might think one project is more important than the other. So despite the fact that there's a, there was a, a majority decision out of the Subcommittee, it's not one that I support. And I think if we have to make a hard decision to put our money behind one project or another, it should be put in the widening project so we can take advantage of that state investment more quickly, get that project done. And in the meantime, instead of trying to move the $2 million, look at other resources and transportation pots around to fund that bridge project and finally get it done. So that's, that's how I'm approaching this issue for further discussion.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate the comments. Sir, yeah, we had, again, as Councilor Smith said, we had a robust discussion. He made a lot of good points in support of the widening project, which would be between 16th Street and Olive. Uh, and then uh, Mayor Pro Tem Boyle and I were in support of the bridge project as well, in, instead. Um, sir, you want to address any of the, the counterpoints to that?
Yeah, I was trying to write everything down that I remember talking about. I mean, since being on the council, this, I mean, even before being on the council, this has been an ongoing issue is the bridge. And widening it, I think a lot of our constituents and those that travel Highway 59 would be very happy, um, anyone that's driven through it. I mean, I try to avoid it at all costs if I can, um, but they'd be very happy for that to be widening. Um, and then talking with staff, you know, they've looked at getting the federal funds for bridges, but the money needs to be about, what, $100 million? So unless we're putting the Golden Gate Bridge in Merced, um, yeah, I don't think that's going to happen. So we just don't have that threshold of receiving that kind of money um, for that type of project. And um, another point, I, there could have been more, but the ones that I could just think of right now were, we keep developing in North Merced and if we do not widen that bridge, um, it's just going to keep getting bottlenecked. And I think that if we were to put the money and get this project done, there could be money down the road that we get from widening the other places. I think when other jurisdictions look at bridge, they kind of freak out thinking it's this huge bridge like the Bradley Overpass or something else, but it's something that needs to be done, and so this is why I'm supporting it.
Yeah, Sam, I think the um, both are certainly important projects, both priority projects. Um, our customer Dupont, before I go, you, go ahead, jump in.
Go ahead.
Okay. Go ahead if you want, but I, or else I'm, I'm happy to go. Okay. No, both are important, both are certainly priority projects, they're on our, our regional list for a reason. Uh, I think the, the bridge is a better project for a variety of reasons. One, um, the, it looked, even though we have the, the shop money, uh, for the, the widening project, on a whole, it's still an easier project to get done because the, the widening involves uh, uh, some more uh, different, uh, you know, with the right of acquisition, there's a lot of other stuff as well, which makes that project really complicated. Um, the widening, the value of the widening project is a lot, is reduced dramatically because you have, even if you widen 59, you still have Olive and the railroads uh, right in front as you're uh, at um, just before Olive, so two major uh, things that, that kind of slow traffic there. Also 16th Street uh, without that intersection getting done. Um, also the complications involved in, in widening it. And then two um, other big projects as well, that's the proposed Mitzi corridor for the, the High School rail realignment. So if and when um, the Amtrak is realigned, it goes right down that corridor. Um, so if, you know, if that's widened some years out, um, if it's widened some years out and then potentially if that project happens, um, it would affect that, uh, because it's the same corridor. Also, um, a big priority project for the county is the Atwater-Merced Expressway, so once that's built, that'll route traffic um, around uh, from Highway 99 to Bellevue and kind of alleviate some of the need, uh, or some of the, the pressure on 59 as well. Um, so just some of the few uh, overall transportation flow, potential of the Mitzi project, and then um, also too, that bridge is a big priority, just given how narrow it is. Councilmember Dupont?
Thank you, Mayor. One, the opportunity for the transportation subcommittee to talk before I jumped in. Well, I, I appreciate Councilmember Smith of the, the $2 million, and to leverage that $2 million, that I still think that we can, you know, what staff has said and what city manager or city engineer, uh, Jordan has said is that we can use, still use that $2 million in the meantime. I think we need to focus on what project we can get done and what may be the, the greater safety concern. I recently heard that there was a meeting um, with the Transportation um, Commission here in Merced, and they had to stop uh, for travel along that bridge. It's, it's a greater occurrence than um, really is necessary, and I, I think a lot of people have been waiting for the bridge widening project. So to focus on a project and get something done in the meantime, um, while I, I totally understand trying to leverage that $2 million, it doesn't mean that we can't expend that $2 million and, and lose out on that grant opportunity. Um, and then I will obviously put a plug in for Mission Avenue widening. Uh, it's um, we talked about last meeting, McKee being a terrible road. Well, come down to Mission, uh, and it'll give a run for its money. So uh, it's something that's desperately needed uh, for transportation. We talk about, you know, transportation, just how cars move along the city. Um, you know, that's an extension of Campus Parkway, you get travel on South 59 there. If you can get across Mission into 99, it alleviates some of the pressure that we do have going on Martin Luther King and South 59 to 99. So um, and the, the road needs to be redone, really. I mean, it's, it's been long overdue for, for Mission Avenue and uh, South Merced residents there. So we have a lot of projects, and we have a huge project in CP 42 there. Um, people are going to be traveling uh, the road, so I think it's a, it's an important um, project to focus on, while maybe not uh, this year, hopefully in the years to come to make that a, the regional project that we're focusing on. Thank you.
No, Mission's a, yeah, Mission's a big deal, only going to get to be a bigger deal too, especially with all the growth down there. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. So I mean, I can see which way this is going, and that's perfectly fine, that's why we have this discussion. I want to be clear, I completely understand the safety imperative of widening, the bridge on 59 over the creek, that's not an issue. I mean, to me, I, I would disagree a little bit in the characterization of the $2 million. Staff doesn't know yet if they can keep the money. They're going to make an effort, and I believe it'll be a good faith, best effort, but I see two projects that are worthy, that are needed for resident's safety and traffic flow. They both need to get done. I think it's a real risk for this council to walk away from $2 million. I mean, I really do. We're potentially going to go to the voters for more funding for some issue, could potentially be roads, I think this is going to boomerang back. I think there's, I think there's a way we can get both projects done, so um, that's where I come down.
Mr. Brett?
Yeah, I, I think what I'm hearing is, these are all priorities. It's, this isn't about a priority issue, this is about a, a funding issue, right? It, it, that's the unfortunate situation we're in, is that we need a lot more money to finish the projects that we just don't have. Uh, one thing I just want to point out too, you know, there, there's, this admin report was prepared for you on like, the 9th of October, and we're, what are, we're the 20th now, right? So like, there's a reality that happened since then, and so I've had communications with MCAG as of Friday, and I don't know if it's going to come to fruition, but there could be a strategy that they want to talk about with the full board, uh, to try to leverage some future revenues, to try to fund everything on the books. Unfortunately, you have to kind of make a commitment tonight because they're requesting it, so we don't really have a way to back out of this, but uh, depending on how the full MCG board considers this, there might be a, a, a plan in place where all these Measure V projects, regional projects can get funded, um, and becomes kind of a mute point, so I, you know, I don't want to tip this too much because it's not your policy decision to make, but there's something that's being discussed at that level that might work through. I just want to kind of reiterate, this is not about a priority, there, these are all very important, they're all priorities, they're all safety needs too. Uh, it, it's a funding issue, so the assignment was figure out a way to, to get this logjam moving, and we're following the direction that they suggested, which made a lot of sense to all of us, right? Whether you picked this one or that one, we got it, it made sense. Put money into a project where you can try to push something through. I think there's going to be a lot to say when this uh, board meeting happens, and they've got some different suggestions that are out there, so it may be that the decision we make tonight is an interim decision, and there might be something that comes forward that's going to be beneficial to all of us. So uh, if that helps you in your decision making, I just wanted to make sure I get that out for this evening's consideration.
Very cryptic. All right, anybody else? Additional discussion, questions or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? That's approved as recommended, or as stated in the staff report?
Second.
Okay, but motion by Mayor Pro Tem Boyle and a second by Councilmember Harris. The motion will include the adoption of Resolution 2025 dash 61, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Merced, California, approving an application to the Merced County Association of Governments, MCAG, Measure V Regional 2025 Implementation Plan Call for Projects. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Okay, the motion passes with Councilmember Smith voting no.
All right, thank you Jennifer, on to our business items.
Okay, Jen, item L, Business L1, Request to Add Item to Future Agenda.
Okay, first on my right, council, or Mayor Pro Tem Boyle? Anything for a future agenda?
No, not this evening.
Councilmember Dupont?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Harris?
Nothing tonight, I think.
Councilmember Smith?
So I do have one item to raise with my colleagues. Um, I would appreciate a chance to make a proposal to you all for a more robust and more regular um, and publicly noticed subcommittee system, both in terms of consolidating some of our committees into standing committees that have regular meetings where there is a chair of the subcommittee elected from amongst the subcommittee members, um, both to improve the transparency of our decision-making process, but also, something I've said many, many times, the number and complexity of issues that's coming at us as a council, as an executive team, I think far exceeds what we're tooled up to do. And so I see, I see a more robust and regular subcommittee system as a way for the council to give feedback to staff more quickly in real time, but also so the public has a chance to be a part of that discussion. Um, I think we walked up to the line but didn't cross it in the sub, Transportation Subcommittee meeting we were talking about. So my internal clock, I'm having like a ceremonial flagfly kind of feeling, like we haven't, we haven't crossed the line yet, but I think we need to, if we're going to rely upon our subcommittees the way that we do, because like I said, the number and complexity of issue is intense, um, I think we need to put ourselves on firmer footing, but also let our public be in the room. So I would appreciate a chance to think about it, um, get some feedback from people like City Attorney Cornwell and make a proposal. And I would propose to do that the first meeting in December, before we get into budget. And I'll ask for a second for my colleagues.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Okay, the first meeting in December, which is December 1. Okay?
There we go.
Come back then. Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Deanna, anything for a future agenda? Uh, nothing from me.
Okay, Jen, item L2, City Council Comments.
Council Comments, uh, Mr. Deanna. Uh, council, okay, now it's uh, council comments. So any? Anything, uh? No, it's, it's your turn for City Council Comments. End of the meeting comment, yeah, typical. Yeah, that's why we're, it's on the agenda.
Rumor has it that tonight is my last city council meeting. It's not a rumor, it's true. And it comes about because this past year has been not very kind to Blossa myself. I broke my, or injured my shoulder here almost a year ago, if not a year. We made arrangements to have it fixed, and shortly after, they made, Blossa fell and broke her hip a few months ago. They called me and said, we're ready to make an appointment for her surgery. And it stunned me, and at the same time, I said, I, I can't do that. And the caller said, well, wha- what, what, what's the problem? I said, my wife broke her hip just a couple of days ago. He said, so I can't? And she immediately shut up and she said, well, quiet, she got quiet, she says, you know what? She said, you wait till your wife gets well, and then you call us back and we'll make an appointment. And I said, okay, well, I haven't made that appointment yet because Blossa's still, uh, to go along with her broken hi- uh, hip, she had an injury to her eye, so it's kind of pushed a little bit more. And uh, as I told Scott, you know, uh, I have to take care of her. It's, it's us. I mean, we have kids, but the kids have their lives too. So I, I, I looked at it and I thought about it. Now, I had people ask me several months ago if I were going to run at the next election. And I said, I've thought about it. And then from that, it got to be, only if one certain person runs will I throw my hat, yeah. And then, of course, these things came up, and I says, no, I can't, I can't do that. So we're waiting. I did some lab work for the doctor here last week, and he says, I don't see the report for your MRI on there. And I says, what MRI? He says, you didn't get it? I says, no. This is back September. I says, no, I didn't see it, I, I don't have it, I didn't get any notice of it. So he sent me down to the hospital. And uh, I said, yeah, you, you know, we, we made arrangements to go ahead and come back and do the MRI. I did that just a couple of days ago. But before going, I asked the doctor, I said, what, why do you need an MRI on my head? And he says, I think you've had a, a minor stroke somewhere along the line. And I gave it some thought, and I, those of you who are here frequently have actually heard me start to say something, and I can't finish my thoughts. And I thought about that, and I says, I must do this. So the decision come down to, no, I, 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 I have to drop out. I have to drop out. Now, those are just some of the bad things that have happened to us. Let me put in a, a kicker, that went in Saturday. A friend of mine, Joe died a couple of years ago. And Joe was commander at the South Side Station. I knew him, I knew two of his brothers, they had a large family, larger than I expected or knew. And uh, I talked to the chief. I had talked to two temporary chiefs about, why don't we take that billing? It has not been used for years now. It's a police station, do something, can we, can we go back and put it back in operation? And both of them said, that, at different times, both of them said though, yeah, that's a good idea. One of them, as a matter of fact, we had a councilman that shouted during here, and this was going on, and he said, well, I made that uh, suggestion a long time ago, and Blossa said, no, you didn't. And he looked at her and he said, yes, I did. One of the temporary chiefs that was here, I got up, walked outside and I said, chief, I said, did you hear what he just said? And he says, yeah. I says, did he ever talk to you about that? He said, never said a word to me about that. Now, believe it or not, a day or two before, we had gone to breakfast and I approached him at breakfast, and I says, why don't we get that South Station going again? He did hear that, and he remembered, because I asked him, you remember me talking to you by? And he says, yes. So we had to wait a couple of years longer, but that's okay. Chief came in, he says, yes, we need to do it. Now, my son John worked for the Sheriff's Department, but he knows all these guys, he knows all these guys that are serving now and previously. And the daughter of Joe, he mentioned to her, dad said something about maybe getting that building refurbished and let's put it back to work. She called me, she says, John said something about, can you do that? And I says, I hopefully can, I said, we got it, we're going to put it in motion and see what happens. So I found out from the lawyer, said he might, said lawyer, he says, have her send me a note, a letter, and we'll get started on it. Saturday, this last Saturday, it was reopened due to my friend, Stephen, who made a remark. Saturday, this last Saturday, it was reopened due to my friend, Stephen, who made a remark. And he introduced me to the crowd. And he says, one man did got this done. And he pointed at me and he said, that's Ronnie Deanda, stand up. And I did. And I did what I'm doing now. Thank you very much. But before leaving the area, I was approached by some of his family that I didn't know. They came over, they thanked me and they hugged me. One girl walked up to me, she says, I'm a part of this family. Was she married into the family? It was made her a member of the family. And I believe what she said was, Joe was my father-in-law. She hugged me and she said, I want to thank you. Those things don't happen all the time. They don't happen all the time. But I do know that there are a lot of people out there that know who I am. I grew up here. Merced's my home. I've never left it. I have friends here, I've had friends that have passed away, I've lost, we, I'm from a fairly large family. My mother had 14 children. She lost four that I never knew. So there were 10 of us left. And now we're at the point where I'm down to two sisters and myself and I happen to be the oldest of the group. Now, during while all this was going on, I was doing other work. I worked for the post office for 35 years. So I knew a lot of people and I, I cared for all of them. And I had people that would come up to me as grown adults and saying, I remember you. And I'm out talking to little kids when I was carrying mail, they'd walk along, come to talk to me. And this one particular time, two girls are walking. It happened to be two black girls. And they walked up to me and one looked at me and she says, I remember you, you were my mailman. And I said, where did you live? I said, I can, you know, I don't remember your name, but where in Boston did you live? And she's down at the end of 13th and she's, okay, now, or you know. And she turned to her friend and she says, that was my mailman. And the other one looked around and she says, looked at her and she says, no, he said, he was everybody's mailman. And I literally floated away. And this happened twice in the same area. I love Merced. I love the people here. Two of my, well, not two of my friends, I've got lots of friends that happen to be black kids that are my friends. So I'm going to close this now, but I just want to make sure that Steve knows how much I appreciate that. And I'll never relive that. I hopefully don't, hopefully have to relive something like that again. But I am leaving the council tonight. This is my last meeting. I've still got some paperwork to finish, but then I think if I were to walk into a council meeting, they wouldn't throw me out. But then again, who knows? Thank you very much. I appreciate this, I really do.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ronnie, do you remember the first time I met you in Blasa? It was 2015.
Yeah.
In connection with the districting process. And at that time, to everybody I saw interact with you, you were Mr. Deanda. Nothing but tremendous respect from the community, from me. And I'm just glad the last three and a half years, I got a chance to get to know Ronnie, starting in the campaign and now serving with you on council. There is no greater picture of love for family, for Blasa, for your, our community than you. And I'm going to miss having a chance to work with you on council, but I know you're not going to be too far away.
Thank you.
And look forward to working with you even more. You are, if courage is doing what you know you got to do despite what life is throwing at you, then my friend, you're one of the most courageous people I've ever met. And I thank you for standing up for District 2, for South Merced and for all of Merced and doing what you've done. It's going to be some big shoes to fill, my friend, but I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Wish you good health.
That's not to make everybody else think, well, hey, he like, shame, but he don't like me.
That's what we always thought.
We are different.
We know, we know.
We all are different and I can say honestly that having served on this council and having others that served far to me, there are only two people that I did not like. Two. The rest of them were all good to me.
It was me and who else?
Not it.
There.
We did.
Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. I have other things to say tonight, but I don't want to diminish this moment at all. Ronnie, I've known you a while, I've worked with your son at the Sheriff's Department for, for many years, so I got to know you before. Counsel, you stepped up to help the city when we needed you most and I'll never forget that and I know a lot of us will never forget that. It took a lot of, it took a lot of courage, it took a lot of dedication. You've helped the city more than I think you'll ever know and it's something that we'll never forget. I wish you nothing but health and joy. Not that leaving us would be joyful, but it might be in some ways. But your, your time here was well spent and it is much appreciated not only by your district in South Merced, but by the city of Merced as a whole.
Thank you.
You can, you can walk away knowing that you made a difference and that's something to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Councilmember Dupont?
Thank you, Mayor. Ronnie, being the youngest council member on the dais, even when you met me, that didn't steer away how you treated me. You didn't treat me like I was running for office or didn't treat me like I was the youngest on the dais. You treated me like family. And that's something courageous to do. You continue to just treat everyone like they are your family because you love this city so much, you love South Merced so much. You and Blase, it's a testament to not only marriage, but also love. And it's something to look forward to and to look up to as taking that time to be there for your loved ones. Having a wife and daughter, it's something that I admire and hopefully one day I could be a Ronnie Deanda.
Thank you. That's astounding.
That's cool.
I want to add one more thing before we, before we leave. Blasa and I have been married 64 years. This December will make 64 years that we married. To each other now. I'm talking to, to each other. I'm not talking about, she married somebody for 20 years and I'm married for somebody for 40 years and that's not the way it works. Her and I. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you all.
Mayor Pro Tim Boyle?
Thank you, Mayor. Ronnie, I just want to say thank you for your service and serving the community. I can tell one thing about you is your heart for District 2 was unmatched. It was so great to be working with you for all of the things that we have taken care of in the last two and a half years of you being here. So I wish you well and please still come to our meetings, even if you're just sitting in the back, I still want to see you around. So, but thank you for everything that you've done.
Ronnie, I want to echo the comments of our colleagues and, and thank you for all your service. Merced loves you for sure. You've loved Merced and Merced's loved you back even more. You stepped up at a really critical time, I think in 2022 when it wasn't easy for you. But as was stated earlier, I think you, you stepped up and you sacrificed because your city needed you. You ran a tough campaign and you won, I think probably by the biggest margin anyone, certainly anyone up here has won by, and I think in a long time. So just showed what your, what your community thought of you, handing you that victory back then. You stood up and raised your hand when your city needed you. You served your district, you served your city, especially with, I think, a vote that really stabilized this council in a big, big way. Merced's going to remember you fondly, both for your service to the community and for your love of your beautiful wife and your beautiful family. Time on the council is just, I think, a capstone of a life spent dedicated to the service of Merced, you know, all throughout the years, through the Citizens for the Betterment of South Merced and all your other great work as well. Ended on a real high note the other day, last Friday, with the Joe Cortez dedication. That was really special to be there and to be a part of that. And I think you truly go out a legend in this town. And I think over the years, you know, all your work, all your dedication, you will be remembered very, very fondly. So I just wanted to thank you, sir. It's been an honor serving with you and been, you've had a huge heart for this town for a long, long time and I think everybody sees that and recognizes it. So thank you, Ron. It takes us to adjournment now. Want to entertain if we can, Ronnie, with your acquiescence, if we'd entertain a motion to adjourn in your honor, if you'd like.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, but motion by Councilmember Harris and a second by Councilmember Dupont. Mayor and council, please cast your votes. Okay, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all.